Call to order, the city council meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd, 2024. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Call Amanda.
Bonnie Shimalunas. Pat Steckmesser.
Here.
Adam Mahusky.
Here.
Darla Leclerc.
Here.
Mark Bitner.
Here.
Shannon Derby.
Here.
Bill Leclerc.
Here.
Doug Brandt.
Here.
Tim Petrie.
Here.
All present.
Thank you all for that. We can skip over number four because we are all here. And on to number five, public hearing. Tonight, we have one public hearing, which is amendment to conditional use permit for operation of a commercial kennel, expansion of Lucky Paw's pet boutique, 3310 45th Street. Greg.
This comes with recommendation for approval from the plan commission, the conditional, it's a conditional use because it involves kennel or boarding facilities for dogs. This is a good news story. Lucky Paw's was approved for a conditional use permit just over three years ago in August of 2021 at their current location at 3310 45th Street. And this conditional use permit relates to a planned 3,900 square foot expansion of the building and expansion of the number of dogs that can be boarded from 15 to 25 as indicated in the information from our zoning administrator, Adam Taylor. The owners and their representative from ACE Building are here if there are any questions. And again, this is a public hearing, after which council can vote on the proposed conditional use permit, which is provided as backup. I believe all of the conditions, except for the number of dogs, are identical to what were previously approved.
Thank you for that. So yes, this is a public hearing. There'll be three calls. If you wish to speak on this one particular item, please step up to the podium on your left and state your name and address for the record. So I will now open the first call for this public hearing. Seeing no one, I will close the first call and open up the second call. Seeing no one, I will close the second call and now open the third and final call. Seeing no one else, I will close the third and final call, bring it back to council, and then looking for a motion to approve the amendment.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Bill. Any council discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclerc.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclerc.
Aye.
Doug Brandt.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
All in favor.
Excellent. Thank you all for that, and thank you all for attending, representatives and everything. On to number six, input from the public. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak to the council or has any questions or comments about the agenda or something they want on a future agenda, please stand up and approach the podium on your left and state your name and address for the record. Input from the public. Seeing nothing there, I'll go on to number seven, council communications, letters and other communications from citizens. Anyone have anything? Yes, Adam?
I just received a few. One was someone that wanted us to talk about fees and if they are even allowed food trucks on the beach. Answer was, I gave them the answer to that, and then I also asked Mike to put it up on our ARB board for further discussion on that. And also received another one about garbage pickup on Roosevelt. For those that do not know, I believe it is the intersections that you can put your garbage if you live on Roosevelt this week for garbage collection. They will not be going on the new pavement, but Matt, our public works director, has informed me that they will indeed be at the intersections to pick that up. That's it.
Okay.
If I could ask, Matt, will that likely be continuing for a couple more weeks?
Probably the next two weeks.
Yeah, because the main, as you probably saw, the main line paving down the center got done. We don't expect to see Vinton, the paving subcontractor, back until next week to pick up the parking lane. So, thank you. That was, that was timely that that information got shared, Adam, but it'll probably be the case the next couple of weeks.
Okay. Sounds good. Anyone else? Yes, Bonnie?
I, I have somebody that asked what was happening with the Unimart property.
Pete, we need to get that back in front of council. I'm targeting the work session this month. We had a discussion, oh my goodness, back in April, April, I believe, and I need to get that back here because right now, what you see is happening, which is absolutely nothing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Nothing else, we will go on to number eight, council reports from boards, commissions, and committees. Anyone have anything? Darla?
Main Street, there's going to be a ribbon cutting to celebrate 90 years at Karenette, and that's going to be on Tuesday, September 24th at 12:15. And we're going to help them celebrate 90 years in business. And if anyone would like to go, contact Main Street for more information. And as far as ethnic fest sponsorship is going, we're doing really, really well. We always have a pretty good response to that. And then the fall wine walk signup, oh, for the hosts, that still needs to be done, or more people can, they can still sign up. And in the past, we've had as many as 200 wine walkers. So hopefully our numbers are still up. And, hold on. Also, we've gotten really good response from the public on our yarn bomb, which was at the same time as the banner art. People really, they really, really enjoyed these two initiatives. And then, of course, the mural. And we're looking at, what are we going to do for next year? Right now, we are going after grants, which is looking very promising. So it's kind of like, you know, be positive and optimistic. We're going to have the money. What do we want to do? So we're really going to be looking at that hard. EAB, we've got several videos on the website. One that was just put up was fins and scales, conservation, management, and recipes of the Great Lakes fishes. I did sit down and interview a gal who's got a PhD in etymology, and her name is Shay Tillitson, and she's the daughter, actually, of one of the members of our EAB. She was home with her dad for a couple of days before she was going to jaunt off to Asia and Europe. So we got her right before she was going to go on that, and it was a very good interview about insects and predatory and the helpful ones. It's a really good interview. I just got to finish editing that and it'll come up. Today, I interviewed Mike Leclerc over at Susie Q, and it was kind of like the, the current state of commercial fishing and the future. And it's gonna, it was a very interesting and eye-opening interview, so hopefully I can have that up soon. But you might, they are such an integral part of our city that you might want to take a look at this one because times are changing, you know, so I'll, I'll be letting everybody know when that's up, but that's definitely worth, worth looking at. And of course, some of our future topics are recycling, light pollution and animal confusion, charter fishing and sports fishing, and they all have their niches. So it'd be interesting to, to kind of see what the charter fishing or the charter captains have to say and the sportsmen. So we have, it's a delicate balance between the three different kinds. That's all I've got.
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing nothing else, we'll go on to number nine, city managers report. Greg.
Yes, first off, I'd like to welcome Chief Miner to the front, one of, one of those great occasions where we get to recognize one of our officers recently approved for promotion to the position of lieutenant. Chief.
Yeah, thank you. So I'm honored to say a couple, I think the last council meeting, I announced that we had two that promoted. I have one here today, Logan, who I'd like to invite up. Logan came to us about five years ago. He came to us with eight years of military experience prior to being a police officer, a minimal amount of time, boat patrol down in Hartford, and then started with us where he worked for about four years on patrol and excelled quite well. Ultimately, he ended up winning basically a special assignment to go to Drug Metro where he's also excelled as a Drug Metro officer. So I appreciate his service and I'm excited to have him promote as our, our next lieutenant. So Amanda, if you could come do his swearing?
Hi, Logan Clodge.
solemnly swear that I support the Constitution of the United States.
Solemnly swear.
that I support the Constitution of the United States.
and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
and the Constitution of the State of Wisconsin.
and I hope faithfully discharge the duties.
and I hope faithfully discharge the duties.
at least the time.
at least the time.
for the city of Tewers.
for the city of Tewers.
do the best of my ability.
do the best of my ability.
so help me God.
so help me God.
congratulations.
Now I'd like to invite Haley, his new wife, up to Pinnamook.
No pressure.
The lieutenant's not only pinned, but our workers' comp rating survives. Capable job. For those watching at home, we just lost our audience. The live audience, that is. They're all going home to tune into Charter Cable and watch the rest of the year. Okay, continuing along my report, once again, as the city council did with, by resolution at its last meeting, on behalf of the community, we say one more thank you to Chow and Kim Chong for 19 years of leadership at Kites Over Lake Michigan. And again, this past Saturday and Sunday, it was magic in the air over Two Rivers, fantastic flying conditions, wonderful crowds, and we, and if, and if you got downtown Saturday night, an amazing night flight over the river downtown. So thank you, Kim and Chong, and we look forward to continuing in some capacity, we'll figure it out somehow, to welcome kiter's to, to rivers, whether it's casually for a one-day event, whatever it takes. This has been an amazing run, and we're just lucky that as they traveled up the Wisconsin shoreline more than 20 years ago, looking for a new home, they lit for, for business in Two Rivers, residing in a nearby suburb just up the road. Heartfelt thanks. And if there's ever a classic picture of Chow there with the cigar firmly planted in his mouth, that'd be it. And, and Kim standing four-square behind him, that, that says a lot, too.
I got a question. Have you heard any rumblings of an organization that might be interested in taking this over?
I have not, but that's something we certainly would want to encourage and support. And I think there'll be some effort, certainly some efforts in that regard. We, the police department is completing interviews for ultimately filling what were three full-time vacancies. There's been some progress made on that. Fire department completing interviews for their one vacancy. We've re-advertised with a September 13 deadline for the community development director position, the administrative assistant to the city manager with Lisa's upcoming retirement in November. That is out for applications. And I am just getting out this, tonight before leaving, the RFP on the city manager consultant approved previous meeting. That'll be going out. Roosevelt, looking back over the last month, all the underground utilities were done August 8, grading and graveling done August 21. They started the, or they basically got most of the main line pavement, the travel lanes poured August 26. Contractors still well within project schedule, but sometimes things work this way. There's about a two-week hiatus in the paving, which is frustrating, but reality when you've got contractors that are balancing a number of jobs. So we expect we'll see the street paving, that being the curb and gutter and the parking lanes resuming the week of September 9, and then that'll be followed by a lot more of the handwork and slower stuff that comes with sidewalk and driveway approaches, carriage walks, if people had those little pedestrian connections from their front door out to the street. Those will take place in September. We are pursuing a change order. We're, we're within our contingency on the budget, a change order to possibly do the restoration with sodding, if that can get done early enough, versus seeding, because to tell you the truth, I haven't been real happy, nor has anybody else, I don't think, with what our restoration has looked like the last two years projects. In the past, we have done, when there's enough of a growing season window, sodding, and it certainly gives a lot better looking finished product. So that's being pursued. As noted, vehicular access won't be allowed along Roosevelt during paving and curing, so that's still going to keep that situation for the month of September. This, my earlier comment about garbage pickup as well. But man, it's going to be beautiful when it gets done. So, any questions on that, this year's major project? Good news, out at the Woodland Industrial Park, last week at its regular meeting, the Community Development Authority approved the sale of a 2.5 acre parcel fronting on Browns Drive, just south of Browns of Two Rivers, to Rush Logistics, which plans to build a 6,000 square foot facility, I'm sorry, Mr. Zero there, 6,000 square foot facility in 2025. The company's currently located in leased space on South 26th Street in Manitowoc. They share that building with ACE Building Services. They'll now be fledging and have their own building that they will own, own, per the company representative that was present at the CDA meeting. Rush Logistics currently employs 15 full-time employees and more than 20 part-time staff. They do expedited deliveries, a lot of it less than full load, just-in-time deliveries for area companies. They've got, I think, about 15 Sprinter vans, couple of box trucks, couple of cube trucks, and two semis. So, and they will be developing appropriate parking facilities for those out at the industrial park. The land division that created this lot is shown at the top of this slide, and Lot 2, which is approved for purchase, is just 2.5 acres on the nose. That leaves the remainder site north of the Stormwater Pond, south of Browns of Two Rivers, and south of the homestead at the corner out there at Woodland and 310, the Franz Homestead at four and a half acres. That remainder parcel fronts on Woodland Drive, and the sale agreement will have in it a provision, as already shown in this draft certified survey map, for a 25-foot wide municipal utility easement. So that Lot 1 that's shown, fronting on Woodland Drive, which doesn't have city utilities in place, can be served by way of that easement running along the south boundary of Lot 2, the lot being sold to Rush. The company did request, and the CDA approved upfront, a variance from the requirement out at the industrial park for minimum building size. That standard is 2,500 square feet of building per acre of land. If not waived, it would have required 6,250 square feet as a minimum, so at 6,000, they'll be close. And bear in mind, that easement, while they'll own the property, that, that easement for utilities will impact the buildable area of their lot. But they're a very... a very agile and growing company that provides a valued service in the logistics area, just like a couple of other great companies we have in town here that are in the shipping and logistics business. And we look forward to welcoming them out at the industrial park. I think, it sounds like their current neighbors, the folks at ACE, will be bringing in plans and will be the contractor for the building. Just an update on the revaluation project. A total of 68 property owners appeared at open book here at City Hall during the three separate days that that was offered in August, that to meet with representatives of Accurate Assessors. And again, we'd remind folks, Border Review is scheduled to meet for a minimum of two hours, otherwise as long as they need to, starting at 4:00 p.m. on Wednesday, September 25. And that'd be here in the third-floor council chambers at City Hall. You can still also reach out to the assessors at Accurate Assessing with questions or concerns in that interim period between now and Border Review. Just as I said earlier, a big thank you. Saturday, if you're out there at 1 o'clock, everything paused at Kites Over Lake Michigan. All the kites were brought down from the sky for a tribute to Kim and Chow Chong. And after, they were duly honored, including with some incredible acrobatic kite-team performances, all of the magnificent kites rose back up into the sky, and the rest of the day and all day Sunday continued just fantastic. So again, thank you. Lot of stuff coming up, yet this fall, things don't slow down just because we're into September. This Friday, September 6, 4:30 to 8:00 p.m., hike and brew out at Woodland Dunes Nature Center. And I believe tickets are still available there. There's information on this slide. Any of these events, you can find out more at explore2rivers.com. Also, out at Woodland Dunes, Saturday, September 7, after you're out there hiking and brewing on Friday. Saturday night is, I'm sorry, the Fall Star Party to view night sky constellations, the moon, other celestial objects. Who knows, maybe the Space Station will go over, too. But with astronomers Al and Ben through the big telescope in the sky shed. When you've got a big area like Woodland Dunes, it makes for a nice section of night sky out there. So get out and enjoy that. Friday Night Live in Central Park continues with two more performances in Central Park on the Schmidt Brothers stage, a week from this Friday, from 7:00 to 10:00. Fire on High, a band from the Green Bay area, sound reminiscent of Little Big Town and the Eagles. We thank the sponsors for bringing Friday Night Live to us throughout the summer downtown. No shortage of live music in Two Rivers this past summer at the beach and downtown. Tourist Parks and Rec, Paddlepalooza, Saturday, September 14, over at Paddler's Park. This is totally impromptu, but Mike Mathis, would you like to, I like to call on the department has to extemporaneously comment, because they're all pretty good at it. Paddlepalooza.
Hi, everyone. Yeah, we are doing an awesome paddling event on the 14th, so the goal is to get as many people there with canoes and kayaks as we can. We'll all start a float of the West Twin River around downtown, up the East Twin River, starting at 10 o'clock. We do have some free kayaks available for people if they want to pre-register for those, if they don't have a kayak. And we've got at least 12 different organizations from nonprofits, mostly that are going to bring free educational activities for kids, and we'll have free fishing for kids. Grizzlies will have a food truck there. Rotary will be selling beer and drinks, and so there'll be something fun going on all day long.
Thank you. Furthering Two Rivers status as a paddling Mecca as well. Of course, Two Rivers Ethnic Festival, brought to you by Main Street and the generosity of sponsors, Saturday, September 21, 9:30 to 5:00 p.m. in downtown Two Rivers. And I know some of the downtown area businesses, Lakeshore Rock and Gem is one that comes to mind, have vendor fairs that weekend. And lest we forget, Metalware's tent sale, their annual factory sale is on the 21st as well. So a lot of good stuff downtown, and you can wander a little north, a little west, a little east. Don't go out in the lake. But a lot of other good things going on with Ethnic Fest as the centerpiece downtown. Wisconsin DOT, they did a heck of a nice job with the resurfacing of Highway 310, but guess what? Got to come back and do those roundabouts. So reminder notice did come out today from WISDOT, reminding us that through traffic will be detoured around that section of 310 from I-43 to Highway 42 here in Two Rivers from Monday, September 9, next week, Monday through Friday, September 20. If you read the press release, it says Monday, September 20, but we double-checked, and it's basically two work weeks, Monday, the 9th through Friday, the 20th. That closure is to allow for repairs to the drainage structures at each of the roundabout locations and for the resurfacing of the road surface. You might have noticed the little bump bumps at each of those locations at B, Q, and R. During this time, vehicles will be unable to cross through the roundabouts on either 310 or the intersecting county roads, and it's all part of a $4.3 million repair and resurfacing project that goes from County P out in the Village of Branch to Columbus Street right here in Two Rivers. And there's a beautiful aerial shot of one of those roundabouts, as provided by the Ears Associates website. I think they did the design back when. There was a little bit of squawking about those roundabouts when they went in, but I think we all remember, over the years, there were some pretty serious accidents at those intersections, and haven't heard of a one since the roundabouts were installed. And short and sweet, that's my report for the night. Get out of Mirror's Trail, still a lot of posies out there.
I swear, this weekend, there's a lot of beautiful flowers out there. So thank you, Greg. On to number 10, our consent agenda. Under A, we have presentation of minutes. There are four. There's from a City Council meeting July 15, City Council Work Session July 29, City Council Meeting August 5, and a City Council Meeting from August 19. The recommended action will be motion to waive reading and adopt the minutes. Under B, we have minutes of meetings, the Business and Industrial Development Committee and Committee Development Authority from August 27, 2024, recommended actions, motion to receive and file. Under C, for applications and petitions, there are two of them. The first one is an application for special event beer garden permit, Cool City Brewing, 1718 West Park Street, September 21, 2024, from 7:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. And we have one application for a temporary Class B license for Rotary Club of Two Rivers for Paddlepalooza, September 14, 2024, at 1800 School Street, from 11:00 a.m. to 6 o'clock p.m. Michael Ditmer is the agent. The recommended action will be a motion to approve and authorize issuance of the permit and license. The recommended action for the entire consent agenda is a motion to approve the consent agenda with the various actions recommended. Looking for that motion.
I'll make it.
Thank you, Bonnie. Second, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be all in favor, so please, all in favor, indicate by saying aye. Aye, anyone opposed? Motion carried, thank you. On to 11, City Council Former Items. Under A, we have adoption of updated parks and open space plan. The recommended action will be a motion to adopt the plan as recommended by the Advisory Rec Board.
I'd like to, again, have our Parks and Rec Director, Mike Mathis, come forward, give some background on this. I know those of you on the Advisory Rec Board have been through the process in some detail. Hopefully, all of you have responded to the community survey. It's in your packets. Over to Mike.
Yeah, before this plan, there was a Parks and Open Space Plan, but it had kind of been recycled a few times, just to get projects through and get them done over the years. And so it was time to really go back and take one big look at the entire plan, so that we kind of have a comprehensive vision of what direction we're going with parks and what our major improvements would be over the years to come. Really, why do it? It's a good chance to have community feedback in this process. Parks staff, city staff, Greg and Elizabeth Rungy, when she was still here, and Matt and other department heads have also been putting a lot of work into helping update parks. And so getting all that in one place, that helps all of you make decisions, kind of see where we're going to go. It's also a great tool for raising money as well, from grants, especially DNR. DNR requires us to have it one-on-file for some of their grant applications. But even donors and nonprofits or foundation-level grants, and even working with all of you on capo projects in our annual budget, it's nice to have it down, and you could get a good perspective of where we're going. So one question that will come up, and I'll address it right away, is, well, how are you going to fund all this? We get that question a lot. I don't have an answer for how to fund all of that, because there's a lot of hard work that will go into this. There's also the fact that I did not put a year range on the plan. We took the years off, because really, it's just trying to set a vision, give us some sort of direction and where to go. And I think some people, perhaps if you're not working in the city or around us all the time, maybe they don't understand how we do our typical capital funding every year, and the amount of impact we can actually make with those funds is important, and we've done a nice job with that over the last few years. So you're going to hear that, probably, well, how are you going to fund all these great ideas? And yeah, right now, they're ideas, and hopefully, we'll make them come to fruition with a lot of hard work. Plenty of feedback went into this. We had a public survey. That was going back to end of last year, actually. But yeah, nice subset of the population there. I worked pretty hard on trying to get in front of teenagers and younger individuals, is by far our most difficult audience to get in front of. I reached out to teachers and principals and asked them to share it with their students and do it in class. I offered to come into classes and talk to high school students. Didn't really pan out all that well, but there's still a nice selection of survey results there for you. It was on the agenda for seven different Advisory Rec Board meetings. We talked about it in some capacity in seven different meetings. And then, at the end of all that, we had a public comment period for a month, where we had another small survey, basically just one question. The folks could come in and comment on the full plan, and then an open-house session over at the Community House on an evening as well. So yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions that folks have about it, but we're just looking for it to be adopted for the city. We're not locked into anything permanently, and I can update this at any time with DNR if we'd like to. So, thanks.
Questions?
I'll ask some. The restrooms are number one, according to the survey, and what people are saying, that seems to be the top thing. I am asking to paint out the word "shelter" from Riverside. They don't have a restroom. Two years ago, somebody who never had been to Two Rivers before was coming in, and their little seven-year-old had to use the restroom. They went there, and by the time you go down there and find out it's locked, it's too late. And it was too late for him, and all he would have had to do is go a block over the bridge. I guess I'd like to see a little bit of push for restrooms. I understand you like the water, you want to put these docks in and everything, but sometimes I think it would be nice to do a restroom, especially since you have a building there. And they also asked for buildings of several people. And then I was wondering why you wanted to save that railroad bridge. I get it that you might not be able to take it down, but that is such a temptation for older kids. You can't keep them away from water, from diving off that bridge.
Yeah, the railroad bridge, I think, is a pie-in-the-sky item on that one, for sure. There's something creative or some good fundraising came through from Rails on Trails-type fundings or the railroad company. Maybe there'd be something special there at some point. So that's in there. I think that one is definitely, like I said, a pie-in-the-sky, down-the-road type of thing. In terms of going back to restrooms, Greg and I sat down for capital work, planning out capital budget to put forward all of you during budget season. I know, not allowed to tell you technically, but we are getting a grant for Neshota to update the Neshota Park restroom. We've been looking at plans for the Neshota Park concession building, which is a separate restroom from the park restroom, and Riverside will be a core focus next year for grant funding and capital dollars, too, for the restroom.
Also, I'm curious, your eye on the Coast Guard building. What had you come up with that? Is the Coast Guard in favor of that?
We've just heard over the years that they've been kind of decommissioning slowly. And so if that opportunity presents itself, I wanted to make sure that was in there. I had reached out to them about a project with their beach in the past, and they were interested and willing to partner with us on that project. It'd be for an inflatable obstacle course off of their beach, but that's another pie-in-the-sky type of project. And so just as we, if they are decommissioning and we want to put investment into Coast Guard, Coast Guard Park, our Coast Guard Park, and then a new beach, it makes sense to try to think about that as all is one.
For me.
Thanks.
Bonnie, anyone else have questions?
Yeah, just to go back to Riverside, we show having a shelter there with bathrooms.
Right now?
No, for when we redo it.
Yes, the master plan is asking to update that restroom facility. It does say "shelter", not "restrooms", and it's my fault. I should have had, Bonnie's mentioned this before, that we should get that changed. So we'll get that changed. Yes, the master plan calls for a new restroom.
I just wanted to make sure that we are clear there are going to be restrooms there.
My plan is to do some match, if you guys all approve capital budgets this next year, to take some city funding and match with the DNR Coastal Management Grant to put in a new restroom there.
About the, I can't remember what it's called. It's by Picnic Hill, I believe, with the, it's got bad signage, it's got the apartment building.
Yeah, that's Picnic Hill.
Okay.
Yep.
Are some of those projects more feasible, like, for next year?
Picnic Hill, by the end of this year, we will have brand-new tee boxes, concrete ones, brand-new signage, entrance signage, and brand-new tee box signage done this fall. So that one's going to be done very soon, hopefully. So yeah, you'll see major improvements there. The big project for Picnic Hill is that someday, if we wanted to make that more welcoming, perhaps, or more of an active park, is to move a parking lot over on the other side of Walsh Field, so it's more of a clear entrance and parking area. You'd probably have to have a stairway up the hill from that spot, but that's a big project down the road. We've got lots of things to do. But this golf course should be drastically improved here by the end of the fall. Working with Jim Van Lannan Jr., and he's scrounging up some donations from local disc golf clubs. Joe and Explore2Rivers are contributing some marketing dollars for signage, and Parks and Rec might pull together a little bit out of our annual budget. So yeah, Picnic Hill should be in nice shape here after the fall. I guess that's the other point, is the vast majority of projects in here are probably in progress, or like at some level of progress. Even the, we've guys have learned about, and of course, the visitor center, we've talked to architects and things like that. And so even some of the bigger projects are going, and a lot of smaller projects are in process. We're working on them every day.
Any other questions? Then we're looking for a motion to adopt the plan as recommended by the Advisory Recreation Board. Thank you, Doug. Seconded by Shannon.
I'll second that motion.
Any council discussion?
Just want to say, nice job by Mike and his staff, because Mike put a lot of time into this and presenting all this stuff to ARB, and even the Open House spent a lot of time on making sure the public had some good input, and the survey that was also online. There's a lot of time that he put into that, and even his staff in getting a lot of the parks together, that they don't have a big staff for everything that they do. So they really do a nice job with the budget they have and the amount of people they have. So thank you, Mike.
Anything else? Yes.
I want to second what Adam said. In addition, I want to compliment the Recreation Board, too. They spend a lot of time and hours on this. Mike, your plan is visionary. It's got a lot of concepts that will lead Two Rivers ahead very positively in the future, and thank you for your hard work.
Anything else? Seeing nothing else, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda?
Arlo Leclair.
Aye.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Mahuski.
Aye.
All in favor.
Thank you all for that. On to B, ordinance to amend Section 1-2-1, fees of the municipal code establishing new fees for emergency medical services and fire response services. The recommended action will be motion to waive reading, adopt the ordinance. Chief is on his way.
At the work session last Monday, council heard from Assistant Chief for EMS, Emergency Medical Services, Ryan Menges, who outlined or reviewed each of the individual changes that are reflected in the ordinance in front of you. We got the chief here tonight to likewise address this. I think 2022 is the last time we adjusted charges.
Yes, the last time we adjusted the charges was in 2022. This is something that we review every single year. We were directed by our billing service in May of this year to really take a look at some of the charges on here since
We were directed by our billing service in May of this year to really take a look at some of the charges on here since we were well below what our comparables were charging. And our comparables are full-time fire departments. I'm not going to put a comparable like superior ambulance or bell ambulance because that's unfair. Cause they don't receive any government subsidy. Uh, looking at these charges, the ones that we were grossly low on, in particularly was the specialty care transport resident and non-resident. Uh, what needs to be understood about these transports, these are transports of high acuity. These are people that are breathing via ventilator. They have multiple IV drips. I'm talking three to six IV drips of medications. They may have other specialty things, uh, going on at the time as well. They might have a chest tube or a tube in their chest. These are, these are calls that require, uh, three to four paramedics on the call. And that's why when you look at the charge of $2,000, I think it's very fair and I believe we do our due diligence on that. I did get some questions on the resident fees for the BLS, ALS one and ALS level two, in which we went up by $100. Uh, that, those three charges are billing, um, our billing, um, uh, service stated that those could be raised along with all the other ones, but they didn't think it was crucial, but those were the only three charges. And I talked to Adam earlier about those that we could look at. Um, I believe what we put forth is very fair and I think it's, um, for the city of Two Rivers, they're still getting a fair price and they're getting a good price for their ambulance service. There's very, very few paramedic services that are on fire departments or run by fire departments that are critical care. Uh, some of the new charges on here you'll see is home lockout service. Uh, we do have a charge on there for actual cost replacement of our equipment. I think we'd all agree the taxpayers don't have to pay for fire hoses that are driven over by vehicles when we're unseen. I believe the person that ran them over should take care of it. Or if we go to your house because of some negligence of your type or whatever, and our equipment is ruined, that there should be some type of bill sent to the insurance company. I think that's only fair. Is there any questions on any of these charges? Questions, comments or concerns?
You're talking about negligence from a person, not that something broke while you guys were using it on scene, correct?
There's a difference.
Okay. Yeah, I just want to make sure that that was a difference, not that you were using something and it happened to break versus somebody else that broke it due to negligence.
Any other questions for the chief?
I'm just curious, how many people lock their keys out of their cars?
It's not locking their keys out of their cars. It's locking their keys in their apartment buildings.
Okay.
Taking consideration, there's two entities that always answer the phone in the city. It's the police department and the fire department. So who do the, who do people call to solve all their problems? It's us. That's, that's our expectation and we're willing to meet those expectations. Um, but to roll equipment out, uh, there's a cost to rolling these, these fire trucks out and these ambulances out to take care of that.
Anyone else?
I said. My only concern is some of the resident up charges. Um, the non-residents, I'm not as concerned about. Um, the resident ones just kind of, um, hit me a little bit harder and I know I spoke to you a, about that. I would really like to just start with the non-resident fees going up. And some of the other fees that you have here, like going to lock out, I think that's, that, that's a good charge. And some of the new charges you have on there, I think are good charges. I just don't like the, the up in the resident charges. That's, that's my only concern there. And I, in, in my reasoning behind that is I don't want to deter people from calling the ambulance when they need to call the ambulance. And I think the more up we go, the more you're going to deter people and they're going to try to drive themselves. And that can lead to bad outcomes. And I know I shared a story with some of the people up on council with one of my stories where I, where I waited to just because I could save some money. And I think a lot of people are that same way and I'd hate to put them in that situation. Non-residents, they're, they're not really paying the tax bill here. So it is what it is in my opinion there. That's the difference for me.
We do experience non-payment news. And we have around 70% of our patients are Medicare Medicaid. That is correct.
But remember with Medicare and Medicaid, you have to accept assignment and whatever the going reimbursement rate is, you're precluded from billing the patient for the balance and help me out chief, but that's the major driving factor why our collections are anywhere from 50 to 55% of total build. If that, I don't know the most current stat, but they usually are in that low 50% range. And that's primarily due to Medicare Medicaid assignment or non-ability to, to exceed their standard fees.
And you'll see the biggest number on my report every month is the amount of write-offs. I'm not going to say that number right now, but the number is incredibly high, the amount of dollars that we write off, which is basically we charge 2,000, we recoup 200. So then we have that write-off is that amount that we didn't, that we didn't recoup. So at the end of the year, that's well over a million dollars.
We talked about it at the work session. It's reflective of frankly, how a much bigger healthcare system that none of us designed operates. And private pay carries a disproportionate share of the load.
And if anyone would ever want to go through that, our billing process and how we do billing and percentages of everything, you're more than welcome to give me a call and stop an installation. And like I said before, this is something I go through every year and I don't think I'd be doing my due diligence. I didn't give package every possibly could. Like I said, we're well below our comparables.
Any other questions? Comments for the chief? I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with Adam too. I, I'm not a big fan of the resident increases. The non-resident, yeah, cause like Adam said, they're not paying taxes, but the resident ones, that one kind of bothers me a little bit, but. Uh, we'll see what happens with a motion for this. Anyone have a motion? Yes, Mark.
I want to just make if we're going to comment on this, the cost of reality, uh, the costs that occurred, again, were lower than comparable many facilities around us. We're not raising prices because we like to charge. These are costs that we're, they're, are confronted with. I hate to see it too. The reality is we need to make this adjustment so that we can survive and thrive in the future and be able to assist people down the road in the future if we. So thank you for your hard work and, uh, these are real convers.
You think of total inflation over the past three, two years, excuse me, what the reality has been. And the reality also is part of our budget for providing paramedic, critical care, paramedic, ambulance service, which is above the norm for communities our size and a whole lot bigger, has a cost. And, and the primary beneficiaries of that service happily are our residents. More than happy to help non-residents too, but that, you know, and I'm sorry, I'm the, I'm the non-elected that always is at the forefront pushing these things. It takes money to provide those services and we don't, we don't print it here like some other levels do. Or, or borrow it against our kids to pay for the operating budget. So this is where the rubber meets the road and yeah, it's, it's tough. The only thing tougher is not to be able to pay the bills.
Yeah, this is not something I'd like bringing to the council to be honest.
Yes. I just want to say if you, if you looked at these increases on a percentage basis, they're incredibly reasonable. I mean, run into your boss and got a raise of that amount, you'd be pretty upset. So I think
And as I said before, the biggest increases of, I think it's upwards of 20% is to specialty care transports. And these are hospital to hospital. This would be from an intensive care unit to a no majority of these calls are emergency calls and, uh, these are the same, these are the same types of patients that would be flown in a helicopter emergency. Cause by our footprint and by the lake, the helicopters doesn't fly as often as it should. So our ambulances transport a lot of these patients. And like I said, with three to four paramedics in the back or on the ambulance.
Other comments? Promotion?
Take a motion to approve the ordinance.
And, and second by Darla. Any council discussion? Yes, sir.
Yes, I will vote no be on this because of the residents. I do think in eight percent to up to 20% increase is kind of a lot and I don't see a pay increase of that. And if you go back and you look 10, 15 years, it's well more than that. And I just feel bad for, for the residents that have to try to pay these bills when they actually need the service.
Mark.
Um, I'm going to vote yes for the residents because this will keep our operation future. We're here. Again, it's lower than some of our comparable cities. These are costs that we're confronted with. They're re-realistic. They're reasonable and they're not all that high and they're going to save lives. If we keep this organization with professionalism and the quality of people we have, uh, it's good for our community and we need that. Uh, I've ridden in the ambulances. I've watched these activities, what's going on in these inter-transfers. It's amazing. Emergency room bill costs and these are something that we have to realize. I hate to do it. I hate to pay any more on anything. But the reality is we need it and they're going to save lives. So it's a good thing for the city of Two Rivers and the residents.
Anyone else?
What, uh, could you explain again why there's such a, um, why it's so difficult to collect? It, nobody, it seems like nobody pays the 100%. Do you, do you understand my question? When I look at your, at the, um, reports every month, there's always that, um, this is, this is how much you've charged, but this is how much you collected. It, it never goes up to 100% that you collect for your charges.
It would be amazing if it was 100% that would not be ending. But it's just not the reality. Uh, we bill out mostly the insurance companies that we deal with, like I said, are Medicare, Medicaid derivative. And we have to accept assignment. And like Greg alluded to, let's say, um, don't quote, say I, I accept 50% of a $2,000 bill. I get, we get a thousand dollars, comes into the ambulance, back into the budget and, uh, after any of the
Oh, even if you raise your fees, you're really expecting to collect 50%. Would that be a fair way of saying it?
Where, where it would come into play is self-pay or as Adam said, self-pay, or it would come into play those with commercial insurance. Like Craig alluded to before, it's all about healthcare right now. It's, the ambulance service is just a small segment of healthcare.
You know, uh, to kind of make a political statement that frankly dams both parties. So I don't think it does any harm. In addition to ignoring a funding crisis for Medicare that we're all told is coming, just like social security and enough income coming in, the system grossly underpays medical providers if they're paid by Medicare. And that's why you see rural hospitals struggling all over the country. It, it's all through the system. Where this, this is one symptom of it that we see up close and personal because it's a service the city provides. But Medicare, notably Medicare, under reimburses providers of all types.
And it's like, Greg, I too, I do think we ought to separate. We're not talking about collections here. We're talking about the ordinance costs and rising.
And it's, yeah.
So there's a big difference.
Yeah, it's like, you know.
A little political. So we're talking about the reality of meeting the costs that actually cost us, not the
We're, we're operating within a system that's been created by forces beyond our control. And those are our, those are our federal electeds when it comes to Medicare, because it's a federal program. And that's great. We keep costs contained by reimbursing it. I'll pick a number, 50, 60% of what the, the going rate is for private pay. And that's magic unless you're the entity trying to provide services. And especially in an eight, you know, we skew older as a community. So we've got a, a higher percentage of the people that are served that are Medicare as compared to the general community out there. But that's, that's the system. We didn't create it. We're a small cog in that system. Pretty darn important when you need it, but that's, that's a big deal. And that's why our numbers sound so dismal on the face of it. I dare say two, a good two-thirds of that shortfall is because of Medicare Medicaid write-off easily.
Anything else? Any other discussion? Seeing else, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda.
Mark Bitner.
Aye.
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmesser.
Aye.
Adam Mahuski.
No.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Okay. Thank you all that. Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. I know it's hard to come forward and ask for increases. So I appreciate your time and going through all this.
Again, if you want.
Uh, on to number 12 from information only. Greg, you got?
Yes, of course, in two weeks, no, a little less than two weeks. I keep forgetting. Today's Tuesday. Uh, you've got a regular meeting on the 16th. We do have five Mondays in September. I don't recall if we discussed, I'm out of the office on the first, um, of October. Would it be feasible to do our work session on the 23rd instead of the 30th? I'm good for either one, but we usually we go to the fifth Monday when there are five, but I guess I'm just asking, does anybody know if the 23rd would be out of the question or the workshop? Chuck, I don't think we had anything with personnel and finance going on with that extra Monday. We, we're talking about sticking with Tuesday nights and occasionally a Wednesday or Thursday morning if needed.
We already moved that to the 23rd. We talked about that.
You know, I think, I think we may have this, it may have been a slip that it appeared this way. Okay, 23rd works. Um.
Well, it is on the 23rd, the next.
Yes, okay. And we'll, we'll note that on the next agenda. Uh, I apologize. I don't think your packets had the 2025 budget review and adoption schedule as, as touted. There was a schedule agreed on by finance and personnel. If you don't mind, we'll distribute that by, via email. And we can also hand it out and discuss it. The other thing I meant to list on here, we've discussed before. We need, we do need a special meeting next Wednesday, the 11th for council action on one of the safe drinking water fund borrowings for our 2025, excuse me, 2024 projects. And that's the borrowing for the water main on Roosevelt Avenue. We got the resolutions from bond council last week, but we didn't get until today. We were just told we'd get it this week. If I didn't know and for sure, we're going to get it today, it would have been on tonight's agenda, but we, we did receive today the, uh, financial assistance agreement from, um, the, the loan program. So that has to be part of the packet. Uh, we had identified the 11th as the date. Um, I guess my expectation was we'd hold that at 6:00 PM unless somebody, unless it would really help somebody's schedule to do it earlier. But otherwise, it should take all of five minutes. I would say, seeing how we're already doing the project, I would expect we'd have unanimity on the vote. So if we, if we have a quorum, I, I need a quorum of council for a good five minutes next Wednesday to act on that. Um, I would ask that the council go into closed session. Um, and honestly, it should take all of two minutes just for a quick update on a couple of things we discussed in closed last week. No action anticipated on reconvening other to adjourn for the evening.
With that.
Greg, just to add to your, um, personnel, finance, he did pass out to members of the committee. It doesn't impact, uh, the rest of the council until October. So you can pass it out later date and you'll see the dates and put pencil in if you want to.
Absolutely. And I, I'll, I will throw that if you don't mind on the agenda for next Wednesday, just so we have an opportunity as a group to look at it.
Good. Uh, then if there's nothing else, on to closed session. The city council reserves the right to enter into closed section per Wisconsin statute. It's 19.851E. Deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investment of public funds or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons require a closed session. Uh, tonight will be discussed possible property acquisition or discuss property, possible assistance to development, development project. Uh, looking for a motion to go into closed session. for a motion to go into closed session. Thank you, Bonnie. Second by Bill. Any discussion? Seeing none, this will be a roll call vote. Amanda?
Shannon Derby.
Aye.
Bill Leclair.
Aye.
Doug Brand.
Aye.
Tim Petrie.
Aye.
Bonnie Shimalunas.
Aye.
Scott Steckmuster.
Aye.
Adam Mahusky.
Aye.
Darla Leclair.
Aye.
Mark Bitner. All in favor?
With that.